It's Juvenice!
Total rot, in the state of decay. Because of you who came in from Assabah, and other areas close to state capital. You that came here through the Adwar, Abrakad, P T I roads. Or you came through the east of the Gougili access. Yes, they were both federal routes. With our roots in Delta. Roots that Deltas have on a daily basis. I say this because the government of today is quick to say that it's a federal road. And therefore the responsibility of the government. Apart from the truth. But it's also expected like others have done, even including one of our former governors. Uh, governors who are like governors of other states. Have deployed state resources to fix some, quote unquote, federal roads. And ask for reform as we are entitled to. And records have it that we don't answer the request. Granted, they will, I think, during this tenure. Eventually, we'll finish to Kowa, up to 68 million naira. Now, I say this because we have a record of this. Kowa, the governor of this thing, will as well decide to put some of these resources from his 4.2 trillion naira in addressing this consent and then seek reforms. You look at these different hospitals, it's the same. What they now call hospitals are pretty much purified dispensaries. When we go to that, for you to even have a patient admitted at the central hospital here. You have to either come with your own generator or come with money for Sizo. And they look at these different hospitals, you know? Serious, serious, serious decay. Sorry that we, we are legislators. I am a legislator. My function and duties is worth defining. Also, we are to, we are always supposed to be into lawmaking and providing oversight functions to government executive bodies, et cetera, et cetera. But of course, our voters who send us to Abuja and federal legislative houses don't have to understand it, as far as I'm concerned. We are the closest people to the government. The senator, his representative, in federal house of rest. And he would ever have interacted with the sitting state governor given opportunity but never been made available. Therefore, the holders responsible for everything, as they should, notwithstanding the straight jacket which would have been locked into them while they're making laws. But that is why some of us have refused to walk within that definition of giving to us and moved outside of it. To see how we can also provide direct projects to the people. And there's so much you can do. It's only by way of interventions. But today, especially here in Central, you go through most of the schools, the public schools, even private schools. But the mission schools are also private schools, am I right?
Yes.
So we try as best as possible to intervene. You call it like a drop in the ocean for want of a better expression, to assist in this sector. Here in Getafe and Abuja, as I've been already looking at the moment, you go to where you must see my interventions, the schools. Either by way of renovation, in some instances, the I C T centers. I think every, you have two I C Ts, I C Ts centers in every area. Every group, project, near the state. And so on and so forth. And of course, you know, the establishment of the federal, good technique. You know, after, uh, broken from them. We did all of this, you know, I said, by way of interventions. But this is actually the obligation of government. This would be the most important obligation of government. People talk about our resources, oil resources, solid near us and what have you. They're good to countries and fast countries. It is investment in education. It's actually more important than investment in development of these other areas. Because any country is as good as the products of their educational institutions. So, moving away from that sector, we also look at the welfare of our teachers. The welfare of those who have been the best years of their life in service of the state. Today, most of you are the writers of schools. You must have families, assuming you are not even one of those who have been years, part of your, your years of your life in serving the state. You must have people in your family, you know, that have served the state and have retired. Our widely service, where given, we meet on this contract, that while serving, a portion of their salaries will be deducted every month for their salaries. And they're all retired. X amount will paid to their first, after, twenty and after, on a monthly basis, and we pay the essential expenses. But notwithstanding, as I said, your sources has come to this state for 4.2 trillion naira in seven and a half years, since 2011. We have our retirees, you know, who have not been paid. Some have died, you know, some have died, we pray they don't die. We're asking that, you know, strength or the hope to keep them alive until they come on board. You know, so that we do the needful, and what the needful, the entitlements. You know, who've committed, you know, manifesto that within six months of our emergence, you know, the first thing we do is to make sure we retire all of those debts, all of those payments that is due to our retirees. And then coming to our schools, our children, you know? Who are in this school, they're both private and, you know? You know, your private schools that you run, they're not charitable institutions, you know, for obvious reasons. Because it's also business, you know? And those kids who also have a paid tuition or pay levels and what have you, it has a higher function, you know, and stay afloat, you know? But who gets to make this payment? It's their parents, here in the other state, unlike other states. They're not even implementing a minimum wage. You know, it's a law of general national application that we passed. If you go to states up north, you know, states like Nigeria and others, you know, who receive the quota of our location every month. They are paying a minimum wage. Now fees here are increased. And yet, who else is going to make this payment? They're not receiving anything, not even receiving their minimum wage. And for those who purportedly are getting promotions in civil service, and not even called upon, they're not even giving the considerate promotional allowances and so on and so on and so forth, you know? So, I thought that the essence of this intervention is to also make you understand the general challenges that we face as a state and how we can address it. Now, even in your business, who is running of this, of this educational institution, how can your school do well? How can it thrive in a state of insecurity? That's one of the biggest challenges that we have in the state. And it behooves government to do the proper investment in the security sector. I believe that we need to modernize our security architecture. You can't do that without, you know, doing the proper investment. Yes, it could be expensive, but it's worth it. As a deputy senate president, I do sit in once in a while in security briefings and of course, classify it. But I can tell you that there are states, state governors that have needed requisite though painful investment, you know, in modernizing their security architecture. And when you hear every day about kidnappings, banditry and what have you, just take your time, sit, get your pen and paper, go to it. There are some states where you don't even hear anything about that. For security reasons, those states cannot be mentioned because we don't want the bandits, "Okay, so that place is there." But the point I'm making is that when you do the proper investment in this security architecture, it will very, very long. Creating the conducive environment for the kind of business you do, you know? To try. As governor for example, I won't be able to sit in government house flung by my security advisor. And I want to go to, "Okay, I want the screenshots. I want to see what is going on in the Abrakad forest." You play the name, we play the call like "Uvre, Uvre Koo, Uvre Abrakad" and so on. So that's where most of these atrocities, you know, are caused. I want to see the videos coming, of what's going on there. I'd like to see what activities going on there. Who are these people that are there? Where are they there? Where are they from? What are they doing? You know, it goes the wrong way. If they don't do the right thing, you play that they have no reason to be there. How's you mobilize your people to go in and surrender? You know, I'd like to do, to say, "Okay, fine, you will, uh, patrol with the forest, for example. What's going on there?" I'd like to see all of this, you know, within one, one second. You know, to show you, and you see what's going on there. If you have headsmen, marines there, who have no business with it, unless you know where they are. If I didn't see what they are carrying, you know? So if you, we do the proper investment in our security architecture, we have a conducive environment for all of our businesses, including the business of the private school owners, you know, to try here in the other states. So it has something which I believe we face. Of course, about issue of unemployment, which was already alluded to in the opening remarks from you, and I would thank you for the, your efforts in that sector in helping us to address the unemployment challenge, hiring teachers, you know, young graduates, and what have you. We want to strengthen you. I tell people that government does not really pay jobs to people. The obligation of government is create a better environment, you know? So that the private sector, that's where you belong right now, you know? And try to create those employment opportunities, you know, for people. Now, if you are doing very, very well, the likelihood is that every first school, you know, is on top of, you know, the others. The likelihood is everybody wants to send children to your schools. And when that becomes the case, then of course, because of your expanded enrollment intake, you know, you can be obliged to also recruit more people to teach, right? And in doing so, we are creating employment opportunities, you know, for, for our kids. You know, now, there are a lot of things you've raised and I agree. The, there's no doubt, like in terms of quality of teachers, qualities of teaching. Our kids, our families are trying to get more better results, you know, from the private institutions than, than they get from public schools. You all have challenges, but yours are given to me, because yours is run as a business. You know, you have an obligation to make sure that it succeeds. As opposed to ideas for these public schools, where they see it more like, you know? The government became, they are not, they don't, they don't incentive, no motivation to do well, unlike the private institutions. I give, I don't, to take my old school, my school, which I attended, and judges, who are open over, of course, who are ten of them. The missionary school where I was there, and of course, after we left, the government took it over. But a good thing that is reverted back to, to public houses. And now it is their institution. So, when I tried to put in more facilities in the school and increasing their boarding facilities by constructing new hostels for them, constructing new set of classroom blocks for them, just to limit I C T. And I, I, I did a lot there, I just can't, you know? I, I was see excitement in them. And I'm also see some advertisements recently, I think, I'm like, you know, asking for additional intakes by way of pupils. And what that means in effect, of course, I was going to hire in the, to, to, so. I, I feel excited, you know, about that. Now, I have seen the request that you've made here. You've filed this in your request, like I said, I was around because of my campaign. I went around and asked it, and asked it most especially, was struck me the most, was visiting the riverine, the riverine areas where very, very sadly. People there don't, don't really live, you know, they exist, you know? They exist, you know? And the whole entity, this way have a 600 students. The teacher, teacher ratio of about 14. For the teachers to 600 students. And you begin to ask yourself, what kind of product are you really expecting, you know, from this environment? You see some of the classrooms, and you shook my head. Are these really schools? Are they really going to this school? What can you learn in that, in that environment? But the bulk of these are public schools. I know yours is a private business. So it's difficult to make a request that you join government in addressing, in addressing this. At the end of the day, you know, you must make, move people break here. Even what I can see right away, all, all areas we're looking at, will come on board. Is to see what kind of incentive, you know, will be given to proprietors to move them back there, to see if they can assist, you know, in helping with this teacher, people, ratio reduction on the one hand, and generally improving education at that level. People can do this, the way of grants, you know, which of course, also give to those of land, you know, and then the levies with enumerated here, you know? They want, you know, to see school fees. Obviously, of course, you know, all of the prayers you've asked for here, there's no reason, there's none yet as a reason. You know, I think we're going to grant all who work with you. To see how we can address this. But it should not be a big deal to us because we have, of course, my leader here, Mark, who's also education, who's also, I'm surprised he will invite her. But she will be a member of this, yours have your own. I'm sorry, you just, you're a member. So frankly, I think in her, what we're looking for is about to, probably already have here in our, our, you know? But like I said, beyond the prayers you've asked for, you know? I'm sure there's more we can do, you know? To make this area very, very competitive, so we can get the very best, you know, out of the products that you produce. This is going to be an interactive session. This will be my opening remarks. And we take some questions as well. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks for the rest of the answer sessions. I'm happy to introduce to us the National Youth Leader of the A P C, the Federal Governor of Nigeria. We also have the South African Youth Leader of the Party, Oyasen Gogo.
This is Senator Arin Komi, governor of the state. Permit me to speak on existing issues. Why is the contribution? We, as an association, we have been waiting the candidates for votes. We look at what they have to say and look at the background. We saw that as a senator, you went across boundary. In your central district, in first line, whether it was targeted or slighted, whether it was, no matter, they were sorted. Schools were being renovated, we are definitely are seeing it. Went aside there, your local community area, your, 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 your soon. And influence there, here, everyone counting, cooperating, this and that. And you have the speaker and capturing everything in our mind. Now, if you are a school owner and your, your parents are say are missionaries and they don't pay, he subscribes it to us. And that is probably what we are facing. And you are said that you know it and when you come, you are going to pay pension. So please let that brought up, because those are the things. In addition to issue that we have raised, you agenda the feedback from the people you are leading as a governor. To what? To get personal information to enable make informed decision. And having an essay, a commissioner from our team, that is directly information from people you are leading with education. But I want to see a situation where they do National Common Entrance, Waek, Nego, Data S H P number one. And that is possible if you give all the assistance we are looking for. And we believe that with your leadership, with the example you have shown, that we will get this job creation as a senator. I've seen pictures of what is happening out there on Roku. People are walking there, they are all Nigerians walking there. That's equal, so if they are parents in school, they will pay school fees. I've asked one of our partners, is the S H P going to look for a job? He's not looking for a job, was interested in what? Creating jobs for people. So that endeared us to us. And we believe that with our chain, our chain, parents, teachers and all that, we have a chain and we talk on passionate ground, on reality, on what we believe. That this is true, this is a goal, a battle that we must fight. And finally, I want to thank you for agreeing to come and take the mantle at this time to rescue Delta. If you are a Delta State, you whip. If you are traveling, you whip. If you are moving on the road, you whip. The obstruction of towers, disturbing hawkers, disturbing keke riders. A grabaway, a keke rider, kada, da, da, is around on the road. I whip when I see them. I have a road car that I'm driving. They will not allow me to park because the car is full. You're asking for document that cannot exist. It's, it's, it's humiliating to us. So you have said, we are saying that, we here as a body, we have suffered it and we don't want to continue. That is why you are choosing to continue. I believe that we, for the body.
Comrade, let go already. The proprietor of Kings and Queens Public Schools. As a matter of fact, in the first place, I want to really thank our governor to be 2023, to be Omar Agueye. For all his developers who have tried to bring the state to his former, yes, his state. Yes. The state has lost its glory a long time ago and people are suffering. I myself, standing here before you, is a retired headmaster. I retired a couple of five years ago with all the sufferings. I live at the mercy of the children that I brought up and my wife. They give me the present, the position you see me. Now, when we were teaching, while working, we were, we were delivering. That's about 800 something from our Saturday every month. Contributing, contributing precious skin. We're paying it, separate it. Any day we come, we enjoy it. We did it with pains. But here we are today, when I calculated what I contributed, it amounted to 1.1 million without interest. And today, nothing has been given. I know it's going to speak for us. That is why God has created you to be our saving. I'm the father of 10 children. My last, my last baby, my last baby is 21 years today. The last baby. So we are all, you know, boys, to vote for you. And who will also meet our teachers, their children, parents, women, to come at a mass and give you their votes. We got to be the blessing as you rule us. Thank you, sir.
I've heard from a lot of candidates. Our candidate is the right choice. Our candidate is an intellect. I've heard of that other, other kind of speech, but they don't have the quality that others. Very sound, very, very sound. I was just smiling when you were speaking here, I was hearing from the spiritual. I can show you that the spiritual rules the visitor. I'm joking, two, three months from now, you compare it and you go, "You look for me." God is not mad that you should lie, not that you don't lie. When he was speaking, God said, "That's the man. That's the man I've ordained to bring this, this very state to service." And to all our hearts desire, we come to speedy manifestation. The man I'm bringing for you. So I like believe that the spiritual rules the physical. It is settled in the spiritual. No thing anybody can cover. We have your pastors when we pray. And so hopefully, just like our bishop said, so far been saying, you are praying for Omar Agueye. I say, yes, that is the man that God said is going to be our next governor. We are seven, fasting and praying, and God has confirmed our prayers. All I have to say is, "Congratulations." Private school owners in Nigeria, there's one important pain we have. Is the pain of the renewal. Like as I'm speaking to you now, so, yes, yes, renewal classes. As I'm speaking to you now, we took the state government to court. And we, we took the state government to court. Today is one of the, they are going to give some judgment today. Some of them are there now, we took them to court because of this renewal issue. It's like a pain to us. Every year, we pay 110,000 naira. 50,000 for North Africa, 60,000 naira for second year. What am I going to say? We, we take that, we take, we don't, we don't find joy in it, paying that money. And we don't know where that money is sent to. I want to say, if you wash, as, as doctor, Mrs. Veronica Obago, is one of, when, when they pick her as a commissioner, in that time, I register my school, is one of the best commissioners we have. They want the schools to staff them. When I, when the time of Veronica have not approved my school, but when Veronica came on board, I have to go and look for my, I have to go and approve my school. They want to close down my school. I haven't have seen Veronica today. I can't just say, today I'm very happy that my school is approved. The woman helped me to approve my school, he put us, so that everyone go approve your school. Don't know what an illegal school. If you wash in Delta State, we have a lot of illegal schools. Nobody saying anything, just to go there, pack a national cake and go. No force, nothing. But we as a private school owners, we are saying, I'll be following you all the time. I never give up following you. Following you the morning, in the day, in the night, go to Roku. Following you the morning, in the day, in the night, go to Rugu, follow you, but I'm happy that I'm having people like this follow you. What am I trying to say? We owners of private school, we are going to vote for Ovier Omar Agueye. Last week, last week, we met with the, uh, the senate representing Delta Central. When they went to his place in Sablech, we say we are voting for him. And this week, sadly, we are meeting with one of the, called A Beta man. Talking to them, we are, we are voting for them. What I would try to say, private school, we have to staff them. Because if we don't staff them, they will push us from the gate. And by God's grace, we are here. And you gave us all the prayer we, we gave, you say you are going to give us one commissioner. And that commissioner, when he take off, when he take off, you call me, you present commissioner. My father is there, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I actually was looking forward to. I actually was looking forward to receiving the questions. But it does appear that, uh, what we received so far in the May, uh, uh, commentaries and commendations. For which I am grateful. Uh, as you were speaking, indeed, all of you, as you were speaking, I was getting very, very emotional. Emotional because more is the validation of what we have done. You see, people look at public service differently. To some of us, it's a legacy. I am aware, like I told a friend of mine, he's a retired judge of, uh, of the state high court. Was celebrated in his seventieth birthday. I told him, I said, ah, all that, uh, uh, God is giving to us at the very least is three scores and ten. And that he already clocked his, uh, three scores and ten. And that if he's lucky, he will get title to be Ezekiel blessing, who is an additional fifteen years, you know, so that we start counting. So for, so take that into account. I know that all of us here, this is stage, we are actors for the greater expression. We play our role and nobody lives here to perpetuate it, you know? But the question that becomes, what do you want to remember? It is not everyone that will go into the history book. I always create this joke that much as they tried in the Bible to list those who were alive. And who impacted, uh, Jerusalem, Galilee and those places, who impacted them positively or otherwise. Much as they tried to articulate them in the, in the Bible, it's not everyone that was captured. It can't, it couldn't have been everyone that was captured. It is only those who either impacted either positively or negatively after all. Even that is rationalist, uh, Barnabas. Barnabas was even captured, right? That's the bad part, uh, you know, the Judas exactly, you know? But the book of the Maghrib people who impacted society positively, but because it means not everyone was captured. So here, I don't want you to be that, oh, I was just here too, on the link my mark. So when I'm gone, they say, yes. Today now, when you go to the national assembly, in my office, there's a portrait of everyone who has served as deputy president of the senate. Right from, uh, even before independence, or from nineteen sixteen or whatever, before.
From fifteen.
Yes, exactly. Who have served, you know, as deputy president of the senate. And my portrait is there, I will be there forever, you know? And no matter how you write history of this country, ah, you must have my name there, no matter any how you look at it, right? When you also come here, I tell people a little story. As a youngster, Bruno, we loved politics. We in a hurry to participate in politics. To the extent that we are doing one or two things that are not really palatable, we don't need, we don't have to go into. But we're in a hurry to become politicians, you know? And that time in old Bendel, when Gov. Ali decided to establish a second university. As young as we were, we felt since it was a bend of state beneath the delta state. And we had the university opening in the beneath, uh, that logically, the next university come to the delta area. And very logically, we felt it was Abrakha, what would have been, uh, converted at that time to be the, uh, the university, the college of education at the time. But Ali called our bluff. I went to a virgin territory, all bush in Epoma. People didn't really hear of Epoma at the time, you know? The man just went and started, started, uh, bulldozing and so on. And then he established the university there. We crushed him, we attacked him. How were we there, very, very young group? We were fighting the man on a daily basis. But the man didn't give a who to, he knew what he was doing. He went ahead and he established the Bendet University at Epoma. Today, it's not Ambrosali named after him, right? Whether you like him there or not, that is his legacy. That is his legacy. There is no way you can ever write the history of education in Nigeria without mentioning Ambrosi. So I ask myself in this time, it's good now, today we are privileged and I feel very privileged in a country of over two hundred billion people. To be singled out, to be the deputy president of the senate. In a senatorial zone of over, uh, how many, wait, it's about ten million, about, uh, about, ten million folks right there. To be singled out, to represent the senatorial zone in the senate, not once, but twice. I have to feel very, very embarrassed. Now, what do I give in return? I already had everything that was missed. Of course, I'm not, uh, you're waiting beyond here, but at least I'm comfortable. My family is comfortable. Most of my kids are just like you said, yes. None of them is going to be going to, uh, feed up protecting Rugu. Neither is anyone of any of the coming here to look for job, you know? But I told myself, I must do things that even when I'm not around, people will say, they served a senator. And during this time, he did things differently. And this is what he did. I could have done things differently. I could have done it like, like others, the people in the country. I choose to be different. I could be a rich man if I wanted to. But the perception is that once you enter the national assembly, you know, that's a platform for you to become that. I'm not validating it, you know, I'm not validating any means. But it's a platform you can use for that purpose if you choose. But I chose differently. They are rather want, want my impact felt in every village, in the zone and even outside my zone. As some pointed out, a few days ago, when I la, in Delta, not to shivily, not to campaign. I was not even allowed to campaign. Because they were not telling me, you are not from here, but you did this road for us. You are not from here, you did this jetty for us. You are not from here, you gave us this irrigation program. You're not from, they made us many things, and they were saying, ah, okay, yes, 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 yes. You know, because for me, Delta is Delta, even though my primary constituency is Delta Central Senatorial District. But when the opportunity arises, I should be able to help everybody across the state. I won't say just because I'm from Central and other zones have challenges. I should not address those challenges. As we speak here today, we have a future, protect it now, in Delta Central, which I will say in Rugu. We will be able to provide the legal framework, uh, for the establishment of the fedra, the university, as a footprint here in, uh, Furu. Uh, we did so for obvious reasons, because before now, there's been challenges, there's been people making the case that there's no way both a polytechnic, both foot prey and, uh, what, uh, you know, should exist and who exists in the same, uh, city. I totally wanted one moved, moved outside of, uh, our geopolitical zone. Should always be battle to make sure that that legal framework is enacted so that it becomes impossible, you know, to move it. Because if you not attempt to move it then, of course, that's any to who presents all, I better not come back, you know? More than movies just. That would be the end of his career. And nobody wants his career terminated prematurely because of one, uh, one, uh, single piece of legislation, you know? So we did that and of course, now I'm showing the next, uh, I'm not making news here, but I'm showing the next, uh, uh, couple of weeks, maybe two weeks, three weeks, right? There will be an announcement establishing, uh, another fedra university, you know? Undokwa Act, that is not for his judge, but I know how marginalized the people of the Undokwa, Ukuani nation have been. These are people just like the Rugu people, just like, uh, the Ishkri people, the Jokis, the Isoko people. Not only they contribute so much to the economy of the state, but they suffer the environmental degradation, which is now rising from the exploitation, exploration of oil and gas using in their, in their neighborhood. You know, and it is for that reason that we receive most of this deprivation of funds. And then we also took the position on the government that, yes, people do these forms, it's actually meant for that purpose. The worst was the sisters, you know, also from this state, who are not from areas that, which is, I mean, they also, they also benefit. You get a lot of discriminated against. At that time, we set it for that fifty percent deprivation for the oil producing communities and then fifty percent to go for the development of the other portions of the state. So nobody feels discriminated, we are all, uh, all, uh, Delta. So what I'm trying to say in effect is that it's about legacy. It's about legacy, where everybody will feel the impact of my service, in the cause of my service to our people. So when I heard you, as you, as you spoke, I was getting very, very emotional and I thank you for that, your kind advice and commendation. Now, I don't know the basis for the litigation, you know? Uh, between the government and, uh, the private school owners. This is about renewal, so that my sisters will not be renewed because you're not paying, uh, you're, you're not paying the renewal fee, is that what it is? Yes, yes. Yeah, yeah. Yes, you see, see, this is part of the thing we say we're going to review. See, when I become governor, we will be having this quarterly with interaction. Think back, you know, as to what you need, what promises we made, how much the promises have been kept, how those promises have enhanced, uh, that sector of, uh, our, uh, economy. You know, it is, yes, I understand, even listening to you, if you had, you had to pay, uh, the one that tank thing you said, fifty K for secondary, fifty K for primary. Your secondary, okay, I'll be fifty K for, for primary. You know, from your grounds, apart from the fact that the money is much, your grounds in the main is what is the money being used for? You know? It is even also possible, and this is never, if it's never entering the government treasury. You see, if people are made to pay money and the money is used to develop that sector, I don't think they complain. Or to the extent there's any complaint, it will mean one. But this is when it becomes exploitative and there's nothing going back to help in developing that sector, people get furious. So my commitment is, is I will make that, we will review this downward. We will do it downward and when necessary, if there's something written to actually, uh, I don't, I don't see why not, but we need to sit down, eh? God willing, I imagine, we sit down, you know, I like to know how many schools are there and what, this is yearly, yearly amount of cost? You know, I don't see what, depending on the number of schools, you know? I, I don't think the schools are enough that even if you charge fifty K, I don't think it's a significant revenue, you know, they're not, eh? But there are many. But we, 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 we will look at it, you know? The bottom line is this, this are cases that are high, we will review it downward, no debate about that, you know? And then, uh, was it you that took the court or they took the court?
They took the court.
Okay, okay, okay. There might be no need for that, you know, go come on board, you know, I'm going to.
Listen, it is, it's free, the proposed fee was two hundred and fifty thousand.
So you challenge it?
Yes.
That, that's exorbitant. We are saying we're going to reduce this downward. You know, uh, so just rest, just rest assured, rest assured, because we're taking you as our partners. We cannot succeed without you, you know? So just taking that, uh, we'll watch your back.
Watch your back.
Now, I've said that, uh, this issue of, uh, employment, maybe I should, I should take a look at it again. You see, it's a very, very crucial area, it's the bedrock of our campaign. Today, the biggest challenge we face in addition to the ones already addressed, dealing with pensions and what have you, this issue of joblessness, job unemployment. There's no homestead in Nigeria, indeed, no homestead in Delta, where you don't have three, four, five people who have gone to school. Expended so much money, graduated five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years unemployed. We must do something about it. And that's why we, we, we are furious at the current governor. I don't have anything against Okoa as a boss, but I'm just angry at his priorities. You know, where so much money has come into this state? Money that ought to be deployed together, will create a simple environment for our people to be happy. The money is being channeled to things like pursuing, uh, an ill-fated campaign for vice president. I call it ill-fated because, uh, fair is fair. The decision was taken by all of the governors of South and Nigeria. Nobody forced Okoa to call that meeting. He was the chairman, I believe he's still the chairman of the governor's forum in the, in South South, I believe, I'm sure. And in that capacity, he called for that, for that, uh, meeting. When all of the seventeen governors of Southern Nigeria took a position, or took two positions, position number one, that President Mamadou Bouharib, our president of no town extraction. That at the end of the inspiration of his eight years, at the next governor, well, the next president, the next president must come from Southern Nigeria. That was fair enough, everybody agreed. Both those who liked him, those who didn't like him, they all agreed. Two, there are nobody in Southern Nigeria, the seventeen states of Southern Nigeria. And I'm sure that was targeted at people like us, governors, former governors, senators, uh, maybe those in the, the principal officers, you know, that none of us, nobody should have said, could you not vice president? So Kujino number one is president, a president only, two, no vice president. Now, when this position was taken, there was excitement all across, all across Southern Nigeria, and some of us, my colleague knows the president, also wanted the president to find out his thoughts, and make sure that he also keys into this, into this agenda. And in fact, President Mamadu Bouari, from day one, he said, this is my position as well, I am a Nautana, a Muslim Nautana, a full name Nautana, haven't served as the president for eight years, it's only fair that the next president should come from Southern Nigeria. So that's also President Mamadu Bouari's position. And then luckily for us, all of the governors in the NUT, they were very surprised, and pained and embarrassed, when they went for their primaries, their convention in Abuja, and Okoa did direct that all Delta State delegates should go vote for Attiku, because they are very structured to deal with Attiku, that will make him vice president, contrary to the dictates of their communicate with all sides. Now, as if that's not bad enough, it is now we in Delta State, they're not be funding this enterprise. Now, a discovery we made a few days ago, which is even the most painful, also from the office of that commander general, that I'm sure some of you have said in government here, and there's a dedicated account, where your contribution, Yung is one point eight million, no, one point nine million, at that time, you can count, that money was going into, with the expectation, through a social contract, that at the expiration of your, your service, you'll be paid your gratuity and your pension. Now, what happened to Okoa, actually dipped his finger, he know that account, because right there is looking for money, left, right and center, to fund this campaign for Attiku and Attiku. So even if he must become vice president, must you do so at the expense of the detriment of people who are suffering, who are trying on the database? That is our annoyance and pain, you know, at Okoa. So now, we've taken the position, just like everyone has, and I'm sure only a few days ago, you also saw that the clerk, Chief Igeklak, come up with the position. Because when we say, they say, okay, we have, we have politicians, maybe we speak with Bia, or Bia, who have interest. Igeklak is ninety-six, I think ninety-three. Ninety-six, Igeklak is already the president, he's already for, for anything, you know. So something must, what he's saying must be right, even if he won't take mine, right, Ali should take his, exactly, you know. So now, for us, we have taken the position that that ticket of Attiku Okoa is a ticket that most Sattana should even look at. And we also know what happens, the challenge we have here today, talking about this issue of unemployment, is because most of the national assets that were he-attacked, generating employment opportunities for our people, were sold to cronies. What I mean by that word, sold, I think, I'm being too charitable, they were gifted, you know, they were gifted to cronies. How do you explain a DSC that was established, one point five billion US dollars? She worked there, she will know, Manati was there, eh, one point five billion US dollars, sold for thirty-four billion dollars. Are you that one, sold? I don't say gifted, eh, that's exactly what it is, you know, and of course, we were told several, oh, to make the company efficient, so that they will have the capacity to perform better, you know, and they like creating more opportunity for our people, but the reverse has been, because, who sold this, or who gifted this asset? Who sold it? Yes, they were aspiring again, I even tried me, that, oh, when they come, they're rated billion dollars, by selling, eh, who will allow that? Who will allow that? We're already crying, and as I speak to you right now, we are taking a second look, a very critical look. When I say this, I guess something I get scared, because all my political opponents, you know, they're saying, even if I give because government is going to review some of these things, I get it right there, they will not collect money and give me the fight me. But hey, I say, but say it anyway, we go take a critical look at that transactional document, because we know that certain undertakings, certain convenance, you know, are included in that, in that transactional document, at the, the, let's be it, the share purchase, the share purchase agreement, there's certain convenance in there, no doubt, we like to find out whether those convenance, you know, we're complained with, and if not, what's remedied at law? We'll find out, we'll find out, but we are determined, you know, to make sure that those assets that can help us, either the way we can get them back, we'll get them back. And then you look at the pot here, the pots are dead, why, why are they dead? Well, it's also part of this, this game, improvisation game. Some people felt their businesses will better enhanced if they want to hear the pot here are shut down, so that all the, the.
IGR.
No, you're not just IGR, all the businesses that have come to work, they go to online, I'm sure you're getting one way, so you shut this one down, shut this one down, so there's no competition, you know, so everybody who are in South to do shipping right there must go to, to there. But I've spoken, that's why you, we're not attacking the book. We've been good friends, we saw what you did in Lagos. You see, we don't just, I don't make decisions lightly. I had my reason when I was the senate, when I'm saying the senate, in the eight senate, in the eight senate, when, yes, when Saraki and others, including this club, you know, the life, you know, when they were thinking of getting rid of Bouari attack, you know, in the course of our, and then the electoral act, you know, to ensure this, this electoral regime that we have now, because we felt that it was always rigged in elections, and we needed to put insanity into this, and it took a fundamental act, I wanted to insert a provision, a punitive position, that was targeted at President Mamadu Bouari, I said, I can't party to that, you know, and it gets all out, we fought it, of course, you also were transpired, some call it different names, yes, right there, but we did what we thought was right. Want to change government, their procedures later in the competition, go and win your election, you know, if you want to remove, you won't become president for this election, you don't come and seize power, you know, through the back door, as long as people like us are there, we will not allow that, that's what led to that fight. So now, as a matter of principle again, I have sat down, I sat down with Aswaju, I saw what you did in Lagos. People talking about Ubi, Ubi is my friend, I mean, he went, anything against Ubi, he also faced the bill, because he said, the president must come from South and, eh, eh, Nigeria, and I found out concern that only two of them, and they both have history, none of them descended from, eh, from heaven, even though I know there's this, this Reven Johnson, I don't know, one other, you know, who wrote about the history of Europe, I think one of the fashioners, okay, I'm rude, also, Udua, descending from, yes, right there, but what I do know is that Aswaju is not Udua, he did not descend from heaven, neither is Ubi, so they are both flesh and blood like us, and we know both of them, at least I know both of them, I know what Aswaju has done in Lagos, and I also know what Ubi has done in Oka, they both served eight years, eight years, and the question is for me and my family, that what kind of Nigeria do we want in twenty twenty-three? Do we want a Nigeria that looks like Oka, or do we want a Nigeria that looks like Lagos? That's a, that's a fundamental question, you know, you see, so, yes, that's, that's I'm trying to break it down, you know, a Nigeria that looks like Lagos, because someone has looked like Lagos in eight years, or one that looks like Oka, because someone doesn't look like Oka in eight years. As for me and Aswaju, what in Nigeria that looks like Lagos? And the consequence of that, I've had the privilege to sit down with Aswaju, I said, Mr. President, I'm going to support you for president, and we have our challenges here in Delta, Wari right now is like a swamp, I grew up in this town, my father was a judge in this town, we lived in Gharay, Gharay, in the Wari, the Wari we grew up in is different from the Wari of, of, eh, of today, it's not a swamp, it's a capital of Nigeria, everywhere they say that decay, even we need a massive urban renewal to reclaim Wari. Now, while pushing that urban renewal, we also need to stimulate the economy, how do we do so? Sir, we want this pot, this Wari pot reopened, and he agrees, but how do we do so? Two ways, first, we need to have the escravobar dredge, it costs a lot of money, but people have been fighting to make sure we don't do so, because if you don't dredge it, then so, you know, most of those big vessels, these craft, they cannot come here, but once you dredge it, they can come, number one. Number two, I had a meeting with Aswaju along with the GMD of N M P C, I said, in the course of my movement around the creeks, that places you go and you see a sign, do not anchor pipeline, do not anchor pipeline. So we need to also come up with this technology, which N M P C has already signed on to, they like they call it submersible, eh, area, I don't know what they're trying to say, they can bury the pipeline, deep, 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 so I can very interfere with vessel eh, movement, both of them, as much as already signed. And you know, if we do that, the business of this place will boom, Asaba will continue to play his role, his role in development, so by the way, not what Okoa is doing right now, you can say I must hear the fate of the proper capital, which is, which is not hearing right now, we will, we will develop Asaba's capital, but here is economic nerve center, economic hub, and the moment we reopen that pot, you can imagine the business opportunities, which will in turn create employment opportunities for children. So all that was pushing me in this, it is how do we create jobs for our children when they leave school, number one. Number two, most of the companies here, that were here, they all left, so I went to Potakos, I went to Lagos. Today, the IGR that Lagos can actually stay without receiving FAK, Lagos can actually survive on its IGR alone, Aswaju demonstrated that, when he was governor of Lagos, and the pastor had to punish him, held the, the FAK allocation for Lagos for almost, eh, right, almost two, three years, they're almost, you get it right there, and Aswaju was able to go from Lagos effectively, seamlessly, without recourse to, to the FAK allocation, why I call the IGR, where is the IGR coming from? It's those are companies here, that were here, that ran to Lagos and ran to Potakos. Meanwhile, they continue to do business onshore, offshore, our territorial waters, you know, the same environmental division is still coming back to us yet, but here the IGR is going to another, we have agreed, he and I, we've agreed, that those companies will come back here, the one that has to come back, I guess, all these companies and so on, right there, will be made to come back here. In addition to that, of course, you also know this security challenge, like I mentioned earlier, if you ask them, the reason they let you tell you, one, insecurity, two, they bet, eh, you get it right there, and for insecurity, I already told you what we do with, and they will need Aswaju on that very one, but on the other one, I need Aswaju to help, I can't do it alone, I must confess to you, eh, and I want to be able to succeed at the moment, I look at you and say, these are the promises I made, and these are the promises I have kept. So, eh, the area of unemployment is very, very, very key, and we have a blueprint, you know, to address that challenge, all I need is your support, but like I said, I cannot do it, you know, I'm glad you're already interacting with our other candidates, I'm glad you're interacting with Daphne, this is a business, Daphne comes from the business private sector, you know, he goes there with a mindset of how to create a lively environment, you know, for businesses to thrive, he's not going there to be a senator because he has a partner to tie, you get it right there, or some, some just see this as, as a title, I would be a senator, yes, he goes beyond that, because when you get there, you also have to be seen to be performing as a senator, you know, you can go there, you got a partner, you raise your hand, they will call you wanting to speak, you know, I mean, it serves good purpose, I'm a presiding officer, I'm a senator, it's not that we are one hundred and nine, we're excluding presidential officer, one hundred and eight, all of us one hundred and nine, if you raise your hand, I decide when I'm presiding, whether you should speak. If, if I decide in my mind that you don't have anything, anything bad to contribute, I will call you. He doesn't speak every time, but every time he raises his hand, when I decide, even when eh, eh, Lamb decides, you know, we always, we're going to speak, because you will be enriched by his contributions, it's not just a matter of creating a partner, I say you're that young woman, therefore you can represent us, so I'm glad that you're already having that interface with him, there's another one again, eh, eh, a river, a river wine, same thing, you know, very, very good at, you know, eh, of course, you know, in the house, there's so many in the House of Reps, there are sixty of them, you know, these are like causing instead of where fewer, and they don't have access to a lot of resources, wherever as a member of House of Rep, I don't think it's, eh, what, consequently, eh, project allocation is more than a hundred, maybe one hundred and twenty million, which is really, really nothing, and that's why the heavy challenges, yes, right there, they say, no, you don't, you don't do it for you, twenty-four, they don't understand that, the man has no access to anything, I don't like, he was a principal, eh, principal officer, you know, and maybe to result, you don't get enough ground, you're likely to understand, so you get that, so we need help, we need help, we have a saying in my place, that if you don't chop pandeniya, even though you've got pandeniya, you chop soup, you've got the soup to chop in pandeniya. So as you stand by me, as you support me, also support those who can make me succeed. Every four years, we'll come back with you, and when we come back, you say, well, this is our group, we are the private school owners of Nigeria, on February sixth, today is sixth, on February sixth, we had this interaction, here upon hotel, this water, 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 the promises that you made, we've seen that you've satisfied this one, you've completed this one, you've not done, what we have seen, no passback, they will not support you, that's how politics is, that's how it's supposed to be, and that's what I want, I want you to hold my feet to the fire, so I can implement the promises I have made. And then, of course, as one of your requests, you want to bring the cabinet, you'll be there, so if it does not work, it's not going to mean you will be attacking that time, it's the person you recommended to work, eh, say maybe you don't go there, you don't, you have forgotten where, where you came from, so when you confront, I say, no, it's not your innocence, it's the guy. He's the guy. So I want to thank very much for this interaction. I want to thank you for your pledges and support and passion I see in you to have this support deployed for us to get the requisite result. We are confident, God willing, to imagine our support business funding by the day. When we started this campaign, it was Obi Omagide campaign opposition. Today, that becoming people's movement. It's become a great Delta state, you know? From the years of my professional discovery. And I thank you and welcome you as our partners. Like I said, getting there every water. Of course, it will be in a hotel anymore, years right there. It will be in Oka. I thank you and believe with you to assist us to achieve our goal, five over.
Five.
Thank you very much.
But mine is still education piece. Because when I followed the capitol training, I saw that they said, no women, no politics. But I begin to wonder, how do women become strong in the society? It still wears down through dedication. I'm hoping to bring to your notice that I am a student of Delta State University, I have a PhD student. Now in my class, I have only five. And why is it so? It is very expensive. Now we are reviewing price of things. Sir, please, I will also want you to review the price of steel fickle. In Delta, even B S C, to get into, let us say, you square from to five hundred thousand. Top more of P H T. A paper defense is two hundred and fifty thousand. One I'm supposed to do, and I've not been able to repay my expenses. So I'm still searching for like eight to one million iran to be able to complete the P H T. Sir, please, I beg you, review it, please.
Very much, thank you. You know, actually, the remarks I made here today, it's not really exhausting. I can't do as possible, you know, not to bore you, you know, with so much. It is not that we are oblivious of this. It's something that we've taken to cognizance. Firstly, generic, generic manner and expressly. Generically, we're going to be, we've agreed as part of our manifesto, to review the levies, the tuition, all forms of fees that have been paid in schools. From my records, I think under or do I have, it was about under something, something? I think, no, it's about forty, forty-five thousand euros. The United States shut up about, almost yes, a little bit close. Again, we don't have that, you know? So we are going to review that, you know, downwinds, to start for starters. And then two, we're also shooting to give buzzers as well. You know, buzzery is what has been, it was there and it was shown down by this current government. Now, also, how we have put monies in your hand, we will address all these challenges. And then, of course, you know, we say, no women, no politics, yes, right there. Even hearing of a new rule from the educational sector, we actually say so in the context of what's prevailing. Today, the bulk of the training programs, they are very fashionable. Every governor, every senator, every representative, they want to do training programs. Official training, so skill acquisition training programs. It's a good skill acquisition training. And then you you attend, you supposedly graduate. And if you find there, you give it a certificate, and you're given maybe fifty K, fifty K to start. I will ask ourselves, what kind of sustainable business can anybody do with sixty thousand naira? Today, right now, there's word all over the place that Okoa has helped himself so much. He said for life now, because he has bought a bank. You know? Called Obi Omagide. Now, to acquire that bank, the requisite amount of license fee is twenty-five billion euros. And I ask myself, I tell people, that if Okoa would have been a graduate of his skilled acquisition training program, and he's given fifty thousand euros, and he acquired the bank. You know, so what we decided to do, you know, God willing, we imagine. You know, it will sign, we, we, we have an interaction like this with all of the banking, all of the banks, the banks in Delta State. Our group extract a commitment from them that if we want to do business in this state, or most especially, if we want to do business with the Delta State government, this is what we expect of you. Our women that have attended and graduated from these skilled acquisition training programs, we need you to advance the loans in any amount depending on the area of of interest. We get the banks to advance these loans together. And Delta State government, unlike in the past, will not come on board as guarantors. Now, there's a reason we are doing this. And it is not a knock on the men. I've almost made a repeat here. But our women, they are more I remember the tape, tape on my waist. You know? I trust our women, I think that's a better decision. I trust our women to make repayments, you know, on those loans. No visa, big men, I just trust them, yes, right there. To make repayments. But in the unlikely event that they don't pay, maybe because of one hardship or one development or another, you know, outside their control, the Delta State government as a guarantor, you know, will step in and offset those loans. So that way, that way, the women will be empowered, you know, to set up their own business. And who knows, in the process, also, really, just to engage others assist in their in their, you know, take, take over kids, you know, off the streets. So your point is very well taken, we'll address it, you know? I donation, yes, right. You know, but of course, you know, you know where I stand. I'm sure you all know where I stand, you know, with the view, the first view I just. You know, international assembly, you know, was addressed issue of harassment. You know, especially, especially harassment, you know? So I think now it's becoming we'll be able to draw attention to it. And those who are caught are paid very dearly, you know? For it. That's one of the reasons why we feel that we are fewer, we're like, you know, you're the only one in in your past, you should, you should not be the only one. You know? But in the past, the reason why you can't be the only one is that there are others who would have loved to be your special. They were harassed out of the system, are unable to make it to that place. But it's not everyone that has the power, the real power to say to her, which is, you know? So but that might not be the complaint, I will deal with the fees as well, we will address it eventually, thank you very much.
The Excellency, the incoming governor of Delta State by grace of God. My colleagues, the the chairman of our president, the coordinator of the school organization. The executive members, ladies and gentlemen. Let me just tell you a small story before I head off with my Now, I did my youth service in then Cross River State nineteen eighty-six. And I served at Oyu. At that time, Oyu was, Oyu had only one road from the beginning to the end. And then, by nineteen, by two thousand and twelve, I was now a minister and a district minister. Whereas I was going around the entire United States. When I go to you, I couldn't believe myself. The governor took me to the government house. Where he told me, you see, this government house you see here was built in seven months by Joe Vega. And that government house is finer than the asshole rubber in the cotton house. He said, look at this airport. We build it in eight months. The drainage system in that area, immediately the rain stops, there's no rain anywhere, there's no water anywhere. It turned out the kind of road, the kind of capital of a state that I saw. I said, wow. And then, back in two thousand and five, when I was advised that to go by Jamesy Murray, I traveled to Denmark. And in Denmark, I saw what is called Integrated Development System. A station where every community there's a program, they had a fifty-year development plan. So every community, the community people would meet with government and discuss the number of projects they need in the next fifty years. So any government that is coming in, that is a plan here for them. When I saw all those things, coupled with what I saw in two thousand and twelve, I took some professionals from Delta State. And we start in Lagos for six months. Let's think of what we can do for Delta State to move this state forward, to develop this state. I will produce a wonderful That was why I wanted to be governor of Delta State in two thousand and fifteen. I went round everywhere, I had the burden, I had the passion. But somehow, I was caught up with the zoning policy. We go down and put zoning policy in the industry. From that time, I've been praying. I say, Lord, give us somebody that can develop this state. Give us somebody who has the passion to develop this state, who has the capacity, the brain, the knowledge to think about the development and do it well for us to see. Because Delta State is supposed to be the one state in Nigeria. And so, two thousand and twelve, I came across a man. Two thousand, two thousand and twenty-two, I came across a man who had the same burden like yourself. In fact, he he who declared that he just giving to everybody now. I had something like that. If you read this one, it's even better than the one that I produced. And I told him. And I told him, I will follow you. That is why some of us are here. For me and some of us in these tables that are moving with you, we don't need anything in Delta State. I can never be secretary to the governor, can never be a commissioner, can never be chairman of anything. What I want is to develop Delta State. That is why we are here. Your boy is, God didn't lead me wrong when I decided to follow you. Friends, I want to appreciate all of you. Give me the statement that this is our state. This is our state. Four point two trillion. Is there anything in this state that represents four point two trillion? Please, let's come together. I want to appreciate all of you. In fact, he called me one night and said, there is one person, if you have to, if they get across to him. I want to talk to the private school owner. That's why this meeting is here. So I want to appreciate all of you for the attendance, your cooperation, your commitment and determination, your commitment, your confidence you have taken today that you go out and become us to ensure that the property is done in Delta State. As far as some of us are concerned, we have only one candidate in Delta State. The other ones are just us. Only one candidate. Once again, we appreciate all of you. May the good luck bless all of you, thank you very much.
We thank you for commenting on our videos, please keep commenting. If you've not subscribed to our YouTube channel, please do so for regular viewing. Keep watching Juvenes and keep buying Juvenes. Juvenes is published bimonthly by Pinax Communications Limited. For inquiries, event coverage or advert placement, call zero eight zero three, three six zero, eight two seven one, zero eight zero five, seven eight seven, one one nine nine, zero seven zero two, eight one one, three six three eight, or zero eight zero eight, one five two, four four nine nine, or visit www.juvenes.punax.net. Juvenes Magazine. Inspiring the young at heart.